But they weren't even options, that's what I was so confused about. You're racing these options off this space information.
We're the one that's trying to negotiate.
Well, we can have plenty of options, but the space information is good. How much money was spent on these options just got lost?
They're limited, they're limited full time. Instead of going full time and scheduling all day.
So did Lawrence County, and so did Hamilton County, and so did Jasper County, and so did Linnier County. And they figured it out.
Basically, it's like thirty-eight hours a week. Somebody said something one time about part time.
So did everyone at other county. It's not like, yeah, it's not. We'll figure it out. I do, I guess, meeting. Meeting.
Basically, you ready to go? You guys ready?
No.
Ready?
Yep.
Alright. Morning, everybody, we're gonna bring the commissioners meeting to order today, September the thirteenth. Want to welcome everybody this morning. We've got Tom Pinkham here this morning from Grace Baptist Church for a prayer. Morning.
Tim.
Tim, what'd I say?
Tom.
Tim Pinkman, sorry.
You were only one letter off.
It's okay. I've been called worse. So great. Very Father, thank the Lord for opportunity to be here this morning, thank for being able to stay outside while one is coming, we appreciate that. Yes, Lord, be with the commissioners as they discuss the county's business, Lord. Yes, you will guide and direct them. A lot of things to discuss, both the commissioners and the county council as they're looking at improvements and making decisions, Lord, that you'll guide and direct them, Lord, because you help them realize the responsibilities they have as public servants to use the taxpayers' money wisely, to guide and direct decisions that they make. You also, Lord, the employees here, here and at the courthouse, Lord, keep them safe and be with them in the work that they do. Because the city workers, Lord, the state workers, Lord, all those who are working to jobs, Lord, be with them, be with their police and firefighters, Lord, and keep them safe. Thank the Lord for the protection that they have here. Thank the Lord for salvation provided through Jesus Christ, we thank you for that. Be those rest of day, Lord, be those that are sick, have your hand upon them, Lord, family at this time. Just let me ask it, amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Tim, appreciate it. We have the meeting minutes from eight twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. Do you want to have a chance to fill those over?
Yeah, I did not see any changes.
Ronnie, you have anything?
No, I do not.
If not, look for a motion to approve.
Send it.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, Highway Department, Chris, morning. Just want to say there was no highway department meeting this morning at the highway garage.
I guess the first thing's under projects. We got the Glendale Road project finished up. We just got some of our invoicing today, it's not a hundred percent of complete, as far as the invoicing goes. But so the engineer's estimate was a little higher when we initially bid and we got like just under a million dollars in our grant money. But then the actual estimate came in lower, so then our grant money went down and then the finished product come even lower, so our grant money went down again, but as our grant money goes down, our matching money goes down. So to do that whole, what was eleven mile and striping it and we took and cut down a hill and everything. I think we were at two sixty-seven. And the initial estimate was closer to four hundred for our matching part of it for the county, so I think we got a good product for a good price and
It turned out incredible. Especially with some of the hills you were able to get down and we've been talking about striping for three or four years and seeing it. You're like, wow, it's just, especially as you sway going up the hills, you know, you always sway to the middle.
Yeah.
Anyway, great job.
Yeah, I was kind of on the striping part of it, I thought it was something we should do. But after I seen it, it's like, we need to do more of it, so. Then I think I talked to Michael about a couple of roads, we need to re-stripe the Kennelburg Road when it's done and out there by GPC was another one. So we'll get them taken care of and then we'll look at some new corridors to do and get stripes on it.
I think some of these real bad hills, we probably need to stripe, just to keep people, just to kind of force them over, at least if we get the hills done, maybe not the whole road, but
Keep people in their lane.
In the lane going over a hill, yeah.
The Kennelburg Road project, they started the concrete paving today on the last mile of it and next week they should start the final lift on the buggy lanes, the asphalt lift on that. I wrote a couple of notes down here. But on the south end where the concrete paving is already done there by Kennelburg and and the buggy lanes are already paved, they're gonna start working on a little bit more driveways, some right away staking, mailboxes, some monuments and section corners. So they're hoping to be done by Thanksgiving. I think October was the initial closeout date, the official date was June twenty twenty-three, I believe. Right now, it looks like everything's on schedule on that. They were down there paving this morning when I was down there, they're getting fired up, a bunch of lights going.
They said they'll, should be done by Thanksgiving time.
Yeah.
Next year, they'll just claim the signs and stuff.
Yeah. It gives them, after they get the job done, they want a little bit of time to get the signs and make sure everything's done.
Grass is growing.
Make sure the grass is growing, yeah. That's the one thing, it has its own timeline, it seems like. They have put a lot of solid down on it, but there's still some grass and stuff. We don't want to just say we're done and, you know, as soon as they pack the paver up, walk away. So I think the closeout date's just a little bit later than the actual completion of the construction date, just to make sure that there's nothing overlooked or forgotten. I do have an LPA voucher for the construction inspection on Kennelburg Road.
That Darnold Block Miller Group again. Alright, we got an LPA claim voucher here for Lock Miller Group for Kennelburg Road, Phase Four Engineering in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents with forty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents reimbursable. Look for a motion to approve.
Send it.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, go ahead, Chris.
Another thing under the projects was the Montgomery Bridge, the agreement with, it's actually with Lock Miller Group for the construction inspection, which I think we've talked about individually. There was a couple of different options that they had given us to do the construction inspection on the bridge that their their engineers kind of designed. And that comes with, you know, we did our preliminary engineering on the bridge that we decided we wanted to replace. Then we did our right away acquisition and then we got our construction bid. We've got our construction crew under contract, which is Milestone Contractors, plan to start in March of this year and I think it's an eight month eighth month build is what they're projecting. And then we did our construction inspection, which is to get a construction engineer out there to inspect the the workmanship and the process of doing it. And it's all based on kind of end dot specs, so they do the testing and all that on behalf of the county. And the proposal we came up with was, I think you guys got a packet there. Two sixty-three, two hundred and sixty-three thousand. With all the options that I'd received and I think I, I don't know if I'm supposed to say that, I talked to you guys individually about them, I think this was the best option that we had. So if we want to sign that and
You got any more questions on that?
No, I don't.
This is coming on King Bridge, right?
Yeah.
No other?
Has our county attorney reviewed the contract?
Yes.
Everything okay?
So there is a waiver of consequential damages, which we normally don't like. They've got indemnification language that works. We've got negligence language that works, but I'm fine with it overall, based on what it is. It doesn't have to be bid as services either, so.
And we got Judy and Chad Gibson are here, if anybody does have any questions.
Bud, just point out that when we first started talking about this, we were over three hundred thousand. And the question in my mind came up is, just because the cost of the bridge has gone up, the inspection shouldn't go up because we're paying more for materials. But this is a hourly contract, so the two sixty-three is the max, it couldn't be lower.
Yes, it's not to exceed.
Right.
I should have said that.
That puts it in line with more what we were looking at at the beginning.
Any more questions?
Yeah.
Judy, come up to the podium.
One thing I might add for the, on this contract is in reviewing it, is if we run into sometime a huge issue on this bridge, it may be possible that you'll have to amend the contract. It's because there's no, I'll call it fluff, that's not really what it is, but this is expecting the bridge project to go perfectly on time, no issues. And so that's what you've got. And then if during the process something goes wrong and goes haywire, then toward the end of this, there may have to be that. But if it's a perfect project, this is truly what we think it'll cost you.
It could be less if it's just a perfect project.
Yeah, correct.
Well, then let's make it a perfect project.
We always want that. I just wanted to make that, you guys understand that.
Thanks, Judy.
And on that, the construction inspector that we've got is Rex Rock, that's who's on the contract to be doing the inspection. And he did the Washington Bridge. Was it five years ago or seven, something like that? So Rex did that, it was a different contractor, but we've talked to the milestone guys that are the bridge crew and everybody that's doing this job and they've, I've got a lot of confidence in what they're gonna do. So hopefully it's the perfect project.
Yeah. That's what we need right now.
Yeah, we need a couple of them, actually.
Alright, no other further questions, if for a motion to approve the Lock Miller Group for Bridge or the construction inspection contract for Bridge one fifty-five.
Send it.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and I don't think it's on there, but I just let you guys know our asphalt plant got struck by lightning, so.
Oh, that's not good.
We've had everything grounded on it. We had fired it up about a couple of weeks ago to get ready to put some base down on the seven hundred South Glendale Road project that we were gonna do. So we did fire it up for about two days to make sure everything worked. We had just redone a silo in this off-season, a batch silo layout system to be able to hold more capacity. And probably about a week and a half ago, we had them bad lightning storms. Somewhere during that time, it got struck. We was firing it up last week to prepare to start our paving yesterday. And it took three of our four load scales out on our way hopper. So we had some guys in over the weekend getting it fixed, we've got some parts ordered and on a lightning strike, you fix one part and get it going and then it goes to the, goes to the next problem.
So we turn that in on our property and casualty?
I've got the guys keeping track of the parts and the time and I actually had to have a company come in to help us, so I do got it.
Have we reached out to our insurance agent yet, just let him?
No, we haven't. We can do that.
You'll do that? You can do that, okay.
Yeah, I thought about that yesterday and got busy and didn't tell them, so.
Most times, lightning strikes are covered under the PNC side of our plan, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll make sure I give them a call and let them know.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Alright. Anything else for Chris? Alright, thanks, Chris, appreciate it. Got our updated COVID policy. Morning, Kathy. Like not a lot's changed on it.
There has been changes. Phone always rings when you stand up. Couple of things, first I want to introduce, we have a new public health nurse in the health department, Andrea Brown has joined us. She replaced Mallory, Mallory's still with us, PRN, but Andrea's with us and has joined in all the fun that we're having these days. So our COVID policy needs to be looked at, you know, originally our policy was if you were a close contact, you get to stay home for ten days.
Right.
And now that's changed, so close contacts do not have to stay home, only those that are sick, infected, need to stay home for five days. And they would use their sick time like they did before.
Guys have any questions on the policy?
No, thank you.
Ron? If not, look for a motion to approve the county health policy on COVID nineteen.
Send it.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll send out the updated policy to the employees.
Then we've got Health Department updated fee tickets.
So since the time that I sent this to you, we have a couple additions. The new bivalent COVID vaccine is available and so we have the bivalent Moderna and bivalent Pfizer available. And the administration fee is forty dollars as well as before. If you noticed, our prices continue to go up. The Health Department is not in the money-making business, by no means, but we just try to cover our costs. I've looked into this because I feel it's redundant to always come and ask for increase in prices because everything keeps going up. But I don't feel comfortable, a lot of practices increase them a hundred percent. I don't feel comfortable doing that unless you feel that there is a different way of doing it. Because we want to provide the lowest cost vaccines that we can. And this is for insurance only, if someone has no money or no ability to pay, there is no charge for any of the vaccines. But this is mainly for our private pay insurance companies. We negotiate with buying groups to try to find the cheapest vaccine we can. We keep a small amount as possible on hand, but prices still continue to go up. If you can find, some of them we have a hard time even finding right now. The administration fee is going up to forty dollars if you approve, and this is the first time ever we've had to increase our administration fee since the beginning of the program.
What is it currently? What's the current fee?
Twenty. It's double.
Double.
Supplies, syringes, sharps, epinephrine, everything, the whole process, and this does not count any nursing labor or administrative labor, this is strictly supplies and cost of the vaccines.
This is probably the most I've ever seen go up on a PD since I've been a commissioner. Got one influenza shot just about doubled had it.
Vaccines is a very big business.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
It is.
Don't have anything else for Kathy?
Well, you said they can't afford it, they get it at no cost.
All they have to do is sign a hardship policy saying they have, and then we just have to show the policy when we get audited, show that we're not picking and choosing who we give reduced pricing to. So all they do is sign a form and they receive the vaccine at no charge.
And how do they know we have a hardship policy?
We, it's on every form when they come in.
Yeah. I was talking to a warranty company last week and they said on page twenty-three, there was a reason.
Now ours is on the second, ours is the second page.
Okay, I guess my point is, I just want to make sure everyone's extremely clear that there is a hardship policy. Because some folks don't know or they're too prideful to ask. And I certainly would not want any financial burden being put on people.
Yeah, and we're very cautious of that, some people even, when we have walk-ins, we wait till we get into the room and to discuss it.
Okay.
Because they feel like they have to pay something and we assure them there is no fee.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else for Kathy?
No, thank you.
If not, like, yep, thanks for everything. Look for a motion to approve the updated fee tickets for the Health Department.
Send it.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. Alright, we got DCH ambulance device Keith Miller here this morning.
Yeah, I don't see Keith here, I can speak to it if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I think this is going over to the council as well, so the ambulance service received a grant and it covered a couple of automatic CPR devices called Lucas devices. So they've been currently placed into our two busiest units. And so far, they've already had a handful of saves with it, it allows the paramedic to administer CPR by applying this machine and so therefore they can transport the patient. So obviously, we wanted to go ahead and equip the other two ambulances, so the total cost was around thirty-one thousand dollars for both.
For both of them.
So I know there's a councilman on the board as well and I reached out to some of the council and they're all a hundred percent in agreement, so of the county providing two more of these devices so that all units have one. So basically, I mean, the council will determine which fund it comes out of, so this is basically just asking the commissioners for our approval as well to pay for two Lucas devices for the all ambulances.
So the council member does sit on that board?
Yeah, Tony Duncan sits on it and I talked to Matt Meredith and I think Mike Sprinkle may have been the other one, but and then I know they've reached out to him, so it's unanimous on the council that they want to cover it and Ron, I think you were in that meeting as well.
Yeah, I mean, the two we have are in the Washington units now. Would like to see one in the Kennelburg.
I have no problem with that at all.
Great.
Guess we'll look for a motion to approve, what'd you call those, Lucas devices?
Lucas, yeah. But if you want to pay for them, they can be in the Michael devices.
Michael devices? Look for a motion to approve the two Lucas devices for DCH ambulance service.
Send it.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we got county website redesign project, warning Dale.
Okay, we've been talking about redoing the website redesign for quite some time. A few months ago, I sent invite out to all departments to get some, anybody they wanted to put on team together, we end up with a team of about twenty-one, twenty-two people. Really hard to get that many people together at one time to view everything, so I took the four vendors that I found other counties using, the state of Indiana offers a program, looked through them, tried to find vendors that matched kind of what we were doing now, but gave us a little more, narrowed it down to three. We did three demonstrations, it pretty well come back unanimous with Civic Plus that I've typed up and sent here. They started out around eighteen thousand four hundred dollars for implementation and sixty-five hundred dollars a year for maintenance. So I did a little, hey, you're close but not quite there yet and where are you there, got them down to fourteen thousand one hundred dollars for a complete redesign. Thirty thirty something. Forty-three, forty-four on the maintenance, so they come down about four grand on implementation, two thousand a year on annual services and threw in a in five years, we can have a redesign free, so it doesn't get stale like the one we have now.
Right.
So I typed this up, gave it to you guys and kind of here representing, I guess, twenty of us, I offered all of them a chance to do this and nobody, nobody wanted to do this. To move forward with Civic Plus, I've checked with the auditor's office. We did appropriate extra money for website design, however, the annual maintenance for this year's our current website has already come out of that, which I think we maybe kind of forgot to add that in there anyway. Leaves us about twenty-eight, forty-three, eighty short. I've talked to Misty in the auditor's office, there is probably somewhere that that can be transferred from rather than doing additional. And if you guys decide to move forward this, let me know which way you want to do that, I'll do the, I'll do the transfer.
Dale's gonna be short two thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars for this project. This is coming on the commissioner's budget, it looks like anyhow a thousand thirty-three, six hundred on our web design. We've got consulting line item on there, we could probably take the rest of that out of there.
Yeah, I agree, if we can take, we need to take it out of our existing budget and I mean, we're in the digital age, so our website needs to be more user-friendly and
And this Civic Plus does give, I'm glad everybody joined in, it gives them a little ownership, so, you know, they've got the tools there to basically take their portion of our website and make it their own, however much they want to do or however little they want to do if they
With your oversight?
Well, hopefully with less than my oversight.
Or with your approval.
Yes.
Let me rephrase that.
Yes. Yeah, it had some really neat tools and things that once we get it going, we can probably look at and expand a lot of what we're doing.
That'd be great, yeah.
Well, I think implementation time was it was gonna be a while, probably six to eight months probably by the time they the time we started and the time that, time that we actually go live with it.
Dale showed me a little bit on that on their computer how that website was pretty user-friendly to move something around.
Yeah, and all the, I mean, they just have a whole new looking field. They automatically adjust for tablets and smartphones and stuff now where you don't have to have a mobile version and it just the way they lay it out, the templates you get to pick from, it makes it, it makes it look like something you're already using on your phone, you know, the tiles and the way things work, it just brings it up to date.
Sounds great.
You have any questions for Dale?
Make sure Grant got a chance to look through that, it wasn't a long contract, it was buried in there somewhere in one of them PDFs, but
The only thing I would say is there's the automatic renewal, so if you don't want to move ahead with this group, onto that, there's sixty days before
Sixty days, yeah, I seen in there, sixty days to cancel if we just give them sixty days notice.
Alright. I'll look for a motion to approve this contract. Eleven thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars paid out of line item one thousand dash three three six zero zero dash zero zero six eight. The remainder, two thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars and eighty cents out of line item one zero 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 dash three one six zero zero dash zero zero six eight. Look for a motion to approve.
That phone went off, could you just tell me?
Start over again? No. It's been recorded. Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now the fun starts.
Yep. Alright, we got Guard nine one one, warning you. Gary?
Yeah, we had a superintendent's meeting last week and we discussed that with them about, I think you guys are wanting to try to take the fourteen thousand dollars out, we take it out nine one one to pay for the school guard system. Each school, they weren't interested in putting it into their budgets either, their budgets are just as tight as ours and you'll never hear me say no to a school safety thing, so fourteen thousand dollars to me is a drop in the bucket, so.
Is that a yearly fee or a monthly fee?
It's a hundred dollars a GOF.
It's monthly.
Monthly.
Yeah.
It's not fourteen thousand a month.
Right. What anybody using that at those schools?
Washington uses it, North Davies, Washington Catholic uses it, Barrie's supposed to be getting on board with it. I know you've talked with Travis and they said that they didn't use it, Mark presented it at the teacher conference before the school started and Mark was they had, felt like they would start using. One of the things in the lettering of it, it's a $500 fine if you missed, you were sent off that. I think they took that language out, so there were more inclined to, to download it.
Yeah.
We've had two false alarms, three, three, one WC, two at Washington High School. The responses were very good and, and just to explain to you what it does is it cuts Julie out of the immediate loop, right? So, uh, someone pushes that, it goes to the officer's phones. So they're already on the way before central dispatch gets it, is the first.
Remind me again, it's been a while since we've talked about this, but is that for every student and teachers or just teachers administration or?
Teachers and administration. Students don't have.
Yeah, I can remember.
That's all we've been doing.
Yeah, it's been a while since we've talked about it.
Yeah, we, definitely, I mean, no one's going to argue about school safety. I, I just argue about financial efficiency and that's the issue I had. Just how this was set up and this was before my time as a commissioner. The problem is, and it is the typical problem, problem in government. When one entity pays for something and then another entity uses it and there's no cross-communication. You can wa, you can waste a lot of money and we would never do that in the private sector, right? My, my whole thing is, is, I mean, it's 14,000 a, a year, it's 1,100 a month, we got four schools. It's $250 a month for a school. So it's a drop in a bucket regarding budget-wise and on a 20, 30 million dollar budget or whatever the schools have, 250 bucks, give me a break. So from financially, I think they could afford it personally, but I'm okay with 911 finding it. I, I want, I want the system, the payment system to change. Because in my, in my opinion, 20 years from now, we're gonna have $300,000 wrapped up in this system and no one will ever know who's actually using it, who's actually has it on their phone, does anyone even know about it? And the vendor sure isn't going to tell us. My suggestion is if we continue to fund it, the schools pay for it and if they can't afford it and they can convince me, I'll personally pay for it. And then turn it in for reimbursement to 911 and then somehow get reimbursed somehow. And we can figure all that out, but somehow, we've got to get rid of this gap. Because the teachers I talk to have never, and again, it's not everybody, but they have never heard of it, it's not on their phones. And it's a hundred dollars for a geo fence, so it's not rate limiting for these schools by any means. I love school safety, I, I mean, they get the program. But I'm not going to continue to rubber stamp this invoice and then 30 years from now, we've got $700,000 wrapped up into it. So we have got to fix the financial payment system so that the user is also the payer so that they can verify the use and then they get reimbursed, if, if that makes sense, so.
Is that something that the county, how, how would you set something like that?
Well, we, we.
Through the county?
Yeah, I mean, I would have to work with Grant and it gets, obviously the simplest thing is for the schools just to pay for it, is the simplest thing and, and again, I I'll never be convinced a school can't pay a hundred dollars for a geo fence. I'm, I'm sorry, but.
It just sounds like to me, you know, it's, it's not that priority one for them, so.
It, it was your typical thing in private life, if someone gives you something for free and they say, do you want it? You're like, hmm, yeah, sure. It's free and it's good, it's useful. But then there's no, and again, I'm not saying that the schools are misusing it, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that I, I'm not going to continue rubber stamping this and then my, my replacement comes and then he or she inherits it. And next thing you know, we got $33 million budget. Which by the way, we got 33 million.
Do we have 33 million?
Um, so I, I could work with Grant and the superintendents if you want and say, look, I can meet with the other superintendents and we'll figure out how can we, how can we tweak that payment system. That's the, that's the only problem I have, is the payment system.
I have a little bit different take on it. If you tell me it's necessary and it's one of those things, it's like insurance, you take it out, hopefully you don't need it, but if you have an incident and you don't have it, probably not a good decision. I think the simplest way is just leave it as it is. It's coming out of 911, that's what the 911's for. I, I agree with Mr. Gabhart in that there needs to be better communication. I would like to know how many teachers in each school are actually utilizing. And again, if it comes back to where a lot of them aren't, then we can look at that. But I think it's just a lot simpler and, uh, at the end of the day, it's not, in my mind, it's not school money, it's not county money, it's taxpayer money. And in this case, it's not even taxpayer money, it's user money from their 911 line, so I, I, my recommendation would be leave it as it is.
This guard 911 though, do they even offer any training for the, for the staff at all on their use of this app? And has it? I wonder if there's a way we can come back and renew, I mean, with, with that.
Well, it's the same thing we did three years ago. We had brought Tim Guy in and we said, look, we got concerns. People aren't using it. We're, we're wasting taxpayers' money. And again, it comes off the cell phone bill, so it's taxpayer, non-taxpayer, it comes out of my wallet, I don't care who's taking it, right? So we came in, hey, we'll refresh the training. Well, then, then what happens? What's that mean? So at the end of the day, I, I just think psychologically, when the user is the same person as the buyer, you're, you're, you're more attentive to how that product's being used. So there is training available, but gotta use it. And currently, there's no, there's no restrictions at all. You get the money no matter what, no matter how well or how poorly you use it, you get the money, so. Anyway, that's just my thoughts, so I, I think that we need to put, put a little bit more restrictions on it or else we're gonna be wasting a lot of money. Because having the tool is great, but if you don't know you have it and you have an emergency, how are you going to use it when it's not on your phone? And then guess what's going to happen? Don't you guys have a 911 that the guard commissioners are paying for? Yeah, we do. You know 40% of the people don't even have it on their phone? Oh, we didn't know that. So.
If it's being used, we've had it before.
Always. Always being used, I'm just saying, if you look at 100% of the people who need to be using it, yeah, sure, some of them have it on their phone and that's great. I'm just saying if we're gonna use it, we need to use. I wouldn't use something in my house and use it 40% of its total opportunity is my, is my whole point. I'm not anti-911, I'm just saying it's not being used efficiently. I mean, that's my only point, so.
You guys sign the checks, so I can find out the numbers.
You want to reach out to the, reach out to the schools again, Nathan, and talk to them?
Do you want to do that or do you want me to do that?
I can reach out to the superintendents, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else for Gary on that? Alright, thanks Gary, appreciate it. Alright, we got SIDC, Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, looking for an extension for approval letters. I think we've extended this one other time. This is from Jenny Dearwater. Looks like they want it extended out to August 25th, 2023. On that same note, the CBBG Extension Award Amendment too is also same date, August 25th, 2023. Gentlemen, had a chance to lift those over?
Yeah, I didn't have any questions.
Ron, do you have anything on that?
The last time it had to do with not being able to get vendors to complete, so I have no problem with that.
Look for a motion for both, for the extension approval letter and for the CBBG Extension Award Amendment.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. These are both sealed, signature on these two. Alright, we got United Way Kickoff, Jamie Chapman, morning Jamie. How you doing this morning?
Good morning. My purpose today is to ask and receive permission to move ahead with the Davis County United Way campaign. I think I've done this the last three years and Rosetta Newton has graciously volunteered to help me, Emily Burton and Brenda Parsons, co-chair. And the official campaign starts September 1st and ends October 31st. So this would consist of asking if we, with the new building, I didn't know if we could have a bake sale. That went over really well in the old building. I think it's been three years since we've had that. Maybe donuts for the employees to pick up their donation pledge forms. Rosetta and I attended a meeting to get everything going with Zella and Murray Crawford and, I mean, it's a great cause. On, I'm gonna send an email out and it says what they've done in the past and I just wanted to know if it's okay to proceed again this year.
Gary, sounds great to me. I don't have any issues in the building, do you? Ron?
No.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it Jamie, thanks. Guess we'll look for a motion to approve Jamie Chapman to go ahead with United Kickoff and use of the annex building.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, gentlemen, you guys have anything else for the commissioners?
Do not.
And in the audience, have anything for the commissioners? If not, look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims and adjourn?
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks everyone, appreciate it.
Weekend, good.